We're going to call our next meeting to order. And is Steve okay? Steve's ready to go? I can't, I can't.
Yep.
My mom's eyes are not working right now because it only applies to children. So, good evening. It is Tuesday, February the 11th, 2025, and I'm calling to order the City Commission Work Session. And we are going to convene the meeting and start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Scott Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. And we don't do the flag salute at this meeting, so we're going to move right into our general business, which is a discussion regarding Parks Systems Development Charge Methodology update. And I'm going to turn that over to City Manager Conkell and Assistant Parks Director Thomas Kissinger.
Thank you. So we're here tonight to discuss an update to the Parks SDC or System Development Charge Methodology project. So in our last discussion with City Commission on October 8th, we received feedback on the proposed Parks SDC methodology update and Commission direction to return with an update that addressed the following items. Add end of the Oregon Park Trail, add end of the Oregon Trail parkland to the project list. Add the Park Place Concept Area Neighborhood Park to the project list. Check census data to ensure it is accurately reflecting number of non-resident employees. Provide examples for the non-residential SDC using a 30,000-square-foot building as the standard. Utilize a tiered approach to residential using the WES model and the way that we assess system development charges under that system. And provide examples of how to simplify the number of non-residential categories. Include a new aquatics center in the project list, but look at a smaller percentage and consolidate manufactured homes into one of two categories. So you'll see that manufactured homes on a single lot are treated as a single-family unit, while those in a mobile home park are treated as multifamily units. So we're here to discuss those changes and the results to the SDC methodology. And with that, I'll turn it over to our consultant.
Thank you. Deb Gallardi, Gallardi-Rostein Group. I think we have a presentation queued up. As Thomas said, we are back for you with updated systems development charge calculations and project list and schedule. And so we appreciate the initial feedback that we got, and we've made changes accordingly. And I will walk through those with you. We can just go right to slide three. Oh, let's see, get that.
And just because not everybody knows who you are.
Yeah. Deb Gallardi, Gallardi-Rostein Group, and I'm the SDC consultant. Okay, great. So this is the updated project list, and the two highlighted items are the projects that were added. The Park Place Concept Area, New Park Neighborhood Park, and the End of Oregon Trail Redevelopment Regional Park. So this is the total cost of the projects, not the SDC-eligible portion. We'll get to that in a minute. But just to summarize, these projects come out of the more recently updated Parks Master Plan, and it's a subset of that list, the highest priority projects that are needed to serve future development as well as existing development. Okay, next slide, please.
Excuse me, before we go off of that.
Yeah.
Tom, could you just refresh my memory? When I was looking at this at home, for the life of me, I couldn't remember what we had put. I knew we added the park that was going to be in the concept area. So what is the other one that says, is this the larger community park?
Yes. So there are two parks planned for the Park Place Concept Area. There's an eight-to-ten-acre community park, which we did have on the list originally, and then there's a three-to-five-acre neighborhood park, which we did not have on the list originally. So that has been added into this.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, and I just couldn't go back into my notes and find out what we were doing there, so.
Yep.
And one thing I'll note on this project list, what we've done this time is we've broken out land acquisition costs from park development costs, and you'll see that reflected in the updated SDCs as well, showing two different components of the SDC, one for acquisition and one for development. Okay, now we can...
Can I ask a question on that, too?
Yeah, sure.
And maybe they wash one another out, and the total doesn't change much. But the land acquisition cost on Thimble Creek really jumped out as me as so much higher than any of the rest of them. And then the Oregon Trail redevelopment looks low. I mean, unfortunately, we can't do a lot with $1.5 million. So I'm just wondering about those two amounts, is all.
Yeah, so I'll kind of go backwards. And the Oregon Trail redevelopment is really focused on the parkland and the amenities that would be SDC-eligible in that upgrade. So when you look at that, it's like, it's things like the walking paths, a lot of that is existing, so replacement would not be eligible for SDCs. Things like a larger bench shell could be, a component of that would be, and any improvements to accessibility would be. So that's what that number reflects. There's other development that we can do there, it just can't be paid for using the SDCs.
And then how does...
Does that make sense? The total for the EOT is higher, but this is what's SDC-eligible.
Okay.
Yeah. And in terms of eligibility, how does the land acquisition cost account for the fact that we might be requesting some dedication?
So that is why we split it out. There was a concern about in some of these areas, particularly with Park Place and Thimble Creek, where we would potentially be requesting dedication, there was a concern there would be double-dipping if we included the land acquisition costs in the overall SDCs. So by splitting it out, at the implementation of this, when we're actually charging those SDCs in those areas, we could potentially, you know, we would know how much to credit them, or we would just not charge that upfront. That's a process that we're going to have to work through.
Well, I thought they might just be a wash, because if we get a dedication, there's going to be probably a request for a reduction in SDCs somewhere. So how does that, is that how it would balance itself out?
I think so, if I'm understanding correctly.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so this, the costs are in here in order to calculate the average cost per person, but based on both land acquisition to meet the certain level of service as well as development costs. And when we get to the end where the SDC schedule is, you'll see that it's broken out into two components. One is in lieu of dedication. So if you're not dedicating land, you pay for your share of the land acquisition cost through the SDC. If you're dedicating land, then you don't, you are excused that cost, but you still have to pay in for development.
So you'll see it later in the presentation, but essentially for Park Place Concept Plan and Thimble Creek Concept Plan, there is a Parks dedication or fee-in-lie component. So that's why we had to separate out the improvement cost from the acquisition cost. So if you're in Park Place and you dedicate five acres, you know, there's going to be, that's going to be, at time of plat, that's then going to be incorporated into your SDC at time of building permit that's later. So essentially, but if you don't dedicate land, then you have the full acquisition plus the improvement cost. So it was a way to try to get land on some of those larger developments when the park is in the right location, to get that dedicated as part of the plat. But then, you know, if they're dedicating that five acres, we're not going to charge them for five acres of acquisition because they've already dedicated that. But this gives us a way to identify a cost per acre that we're making an assumption in our SDC calculation, and we'll hit that probably in the next couple of slides.
Yep. Okay.
And Thimble Creek number, why it's a little bit higher.
Yeah, so the Thimble Creek number represents, there's actually, I think it's a series of three parks that are planned in Thimble Creek, so it represents that acreage. I think it's a total of nine acres total.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thanks. Very efficient. Okay, so again, that was, the project list represented the total cost of those projects that were part of the SDC list. And the methodology goes through and determines then what portion of those costs are SDC-eligible. Like the existing methodology, it's based on the planned level of service in terms of acres per thousand or square feet of indoor recreation facilities. And then, so we determine the growth share that goes on to be recovered potentially through the SDCs and the existing development share, which needs to be recovered through other funding mechanisms. And then an important part of the methodology is then determining how to equitably allocate that between residential development and non-residential development. Both utilize parks and benefit from parks, not to the same extent. Employees that come in to the city from outside the city have limited availability to utilize the parks, but there is some impact, and so we calculate that based on hours of opportunity of use, which is similar to the existing methodology. One of the policy questions that we raised last time was that the current methodology excludes neighborhood park costs from the non-residential component. And some cities and park districts include neighborhood parks in the non-residential, others exclude it. It's kind of a mixed bag in terms of what other cities do, and that's, it's really a policy question for the commission. So we presented both options in the calculations tonight. Then finally, once we determined that split, what goes to residential and what goes to non-residential, it's then we determine how to charge individual developments based on estimated occupants of the dwelling or employees per thousand square feet based on the type of business. This is a summary of the growth portion of each of those park improvement costs. And you can see the bottom line number is $43 million. I think it was $50 million in the preliminary numbers we brought to you. So even though we added those two parks, the total growth share went down, and that's largely driven by the reduction in the portion of the new, the new pool and recreation center costs that are included in the methodology. We talked last time about the fact that that's really a more regional draw, and the city staff looked at some of the utilization of current facilities and determined about a 50% city share. And so that's what's reflected in the numbers here, is that it's assumed to be 50% serving outside broader population. And then the 23% is the portion of the total project cost that are, is then related to growth, because some of that, that recreation center will also be benefiting existing city residents as well. So the $43 million is what we refer to as the SDC cost basis. That's the amount that the SDCs are designed to recover from future growth. The, under Oregon law, SDCs can include both that improvement component as well as a reimbursement component to the extent that there is available capacity, and we determine that based on the planned level of service. And there are a few elements here, the pocket parks and community parkland, and some regional specialty park types where there is, we can show that available capacity. And so you can see that the reimbursement fee revenue or cost is close to $8 million. That's a nice component to have, because reimbursement fee revenue can be spent on any kind of park capital improvement, not just the costs associated with the project list. And then the last component is the compliance costs that you can spend SDCs on the costs associated with complying with the statute, which includes like my time to help you with the methodology and other accounting and legal type costs. So the overall cost basis is just over $51 million.
Can I ask a question before you go on?
Yeah, of course.
Please, go ahead.
So you mentioned that the $7.8 million is not restricted to just what's on the list, but it would be restricted to, it couldn't be used for maintenance?
It can be used for any capital cost. So a capital maintenance project, yes, that is absolutely, if it's, as long as it's capitalized and not just, you know, I don't know, trash removal or something like that, that sort of operation and maintenance.
Okay, so if we decided that we needed to go through all of our parks and repair paths?
Yes.
That could be done out of that?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Replacement of shelters is another one I would think of.
Like ADA law and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep. So the last component of the methodology then is determining how to recover those costs from the individual developments. And so looking at your current methodology, you can see that the residential SDCs are assessed per dwelling unit. It's a uniform fee per dwelling unit based on the type of unit. So single-family has a slightly higher charge than multifamily, and currently manufactured dwelling is a separate category, based on census data that shows average occupancies for those types of housing products. Non-residential is based on number of employees as estimated from employment density numbers that were developed by Metro, and there's different vintages of that information available. But you can see that the, the cost per employee is 519, and if you're a restaurant, the per thousand square feet incorporates then the estimated number of employees within that thousand square feet, which is higher density for like a restaurant compared to a general industrial that has a lot of space per employee. We talked about this last time, that this is really, the non-residential component is really about capturing that outside employment that comes to the city. And, and so for those, you know, non-residential developments, whose employees will benefit from the parks, capturing that component of the park impact. And it is based on census data, these, we did go back and re-verify that, you know, that it was capturing the correct city limits and proportion of outside employment versus employees from inside. And then, so you can see that that, the equivalency factor comes out to be about 23.23, and when that's allocated based on the number of employees from outside the city, it turns out to be about 8.7% of the costs get allocated to non-residential development and 91.3% from residential development. So it's not a huge component, but it definitely helps to spread the costs over all development that benefits from the use of the parks. But key question is whether to include neighborhood parks as part of that SDC for office, business, et cetera. This table shows you the updated residential SDCs, and we have utilized the scaling factors that were, that are used for some of your other SDCs, I think originally developed by, by WES. So the, there's like five tiers here, and it's roughly based on, again, gets back to number of occupants per unit. And you can see here, we've got the two scenarios. Neighborhood parks recovered from all development types, the first set of numbers. Neighborhood parks allocated only to residential development, the tables or the columns on the right. You also see the two components now of the fee, that the in lieu of dedication for land acquisition. So somebody who doesn't dedicate land would pay the pink column, which is the acquisition plus development SDC. Somebody who dedicates land then potentially would just pay the development cost column. So you can see the, for a typical residential, in the 1,800 square feet to 3,000 square feet, it would be, the, the in lieu of fee is about $4,500 per unit, and the development about $7,500 per unit, just over $12,000 per dwelling unit, assuming that, that neighborhood parks are a cost that's shared by all new development. If residence, residential development pays for those costs entirely, then the fee goes up about less than $500 per dwelling unit. It doesn't have a huge impact to residential development, because there's so many more residents to spread the cost over. It does have a significant impact, that policy choice for non-residential development. As was mentioned, multifamily is assumed to include manufactured homes in park, whereas the tiered structure would capture a manufactured home on a, on a single lot. So there's still, there's just the two categories of residential development, but you have all those subcategories based on the size of the dwelling unit.
Quick question?
Yeah.
So Tony, the development that was, that's on Warner Street with the three units, are those all on individual lots? The cargo?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to go check.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if that was, that came in as multi, multiple family.
Well, it wouldn't be, because it's less than three.
Three, yeah.
So if it's less than five.
Yeah, it's less, it's three.
So it's three, so it'd be based on the square footage of the building of the structure, not the lot.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. This is meant to capture middle housing as well, the scaled structure. So up to four units. As I mentioned, the decision to include neighborhood parks in the non-residential SDC has a pretty significant impact, as you can see here, just in the cost, the updated cost per employee. If neighborhood parks are included, that cost per employee goes up to over $1,000, which is more than double what it currently is. And if it, if they continue to pay for other parks but not neighborhood parks, then it's about a 36% increase in the cost per employee. This table, which is a little bit hard to read because there's a lot of information there, it's just showing that the, so under Oregon law, you can't charge non-residential development based on their actual number of employees. So you can't say, okay, well, you know, business A, how many employees are you going to have? And then when, you know, if there's some expansion that they hire additional staff, you can't then go back and charge an additional SDC based on that. What you can do is use reference data that, that shows for different types of businesses, what a typical average number of employees per thousand square feet is. And so most agencies will utilize the Metro data, and the problem is it's rather dated. And so your current methodology is based on Metro data that predates the 1999 study. So the column on the right is the 1999 data, which is the most recent, that's, that really breaks down the non-residential categories into, you know, what you can see here is, I don't know, there's about, about a dozen or so categories. It, it rolls up, though, a number of the categories that previously had been broken out into a lot of subcategories, like retail trade, for example. Used to be about nine categories, and that's what your current SDC is based on. And so you can see that the, the employees per thousand square feet ranged from one to 4.44, depending on the type of retail. So the restaurants had a much higher estimated number of employees per thousand. The new, if you will, more recent Metro data just says retail 2.13. So the benefit of going to these more aggregated groupings is there's, you oftentimes get, you know, an establishment that changes over. It's one thing, and then it becomes something else. Then you have to potentially reassess SDCs and potentially charge a higher SDC if the, that business now is something that has a higher number of employees. And that can be an administrative burden, and it can be a surprise to the tenant who is now going into that same space, because there's that additional assessment. So most, I would say that, you know, the trend is to go to more of these aggregated groupings. It's when you look at the impact, just, you know, there, there is definitely an impact because you're, you're going from, in some cases, one employee, assumed one employee per, per thousand, to, to double that. But that doubling, but that is an average, and it, again, it's meant to represent the impact of a development over the life of that development, to more accurately capture that kind of potential average, as opposed to a point in time. So it's a policy decision. Again, it is based on the more current data, even though it's still a couple, a few decades old at this point. The government, you'll notice that there are also just some changes within an existing category. So there is still a government category, but the numbers have changed drastically. They've gone, it's gone from 3.33 employees per thousand to 1.89. It's just a reflection of, they did the study, the numbers shifted. Not everybody breaks out government, you know, so if it's a government office in some communities, it's just charged an office, like any other kind of office. So there, that's, that's really where there's a lot of flexibility and, you know, no particular standard with respect to how many categories you have. We just have to have a defensible basis, and the Metro data is, is the most commonly used in the Portland area.
So what about like our, the county's new public works facility? It's a government office, but, I mean, it's a government building, but it's not an office. I mean, it has a small office component, but it's got a lot of space for trucks and everything.
Yeah, that's probably going to fall under the Communications and Public Utilities category, perhaps, or maybe there's some, maybe, yeah, you know, there's, it might have a transportation warehousing component. Yeah, it's, I, I know from people who actually are at the permit counters who have to make those decisions, you know, providing some clarity around examples for uses within those categories, that's something that they deal with on a regular basis. But certainly having these broader categories generally makes it easier to place people because there's not so many kind of potential overlaps. But there is, again, it's based on an aggregated average for everything that would fall within that category. So some will be higher and some will be lower. We just put together a kind of a sample here of different... We just put together a kind of a sample here of different types, prototypes using 30,000 square feet, except for the retail store. I just wanted to show a smaller scale. And you can see the current SDC, which is based on that 500 or so per employee. Then you can see the updated SDCs, both with and without neighborhood parks. And I, and I showed, because there's multiple things that are changing. One is just the cost per employee, the other is the, the categories and the assumed employees per thousand. So I broke that out separately so you could see that. If you weren't making any changes to the categories, then everybody would go up at the same percentage because you just assume the same number of employees per, per thousand. When you, when you add on that change, then you see some go up, some go down. And so it's, but again, this is not a fee that's just, you know, regularly being charged. So it's not like my bill is now going to go up. It's just the next time that particular use comes to the counter, the SDC will be potentially significantly different. Just to give you some context with some of the other surrounding communities, this is the single-family residential showing the current in green at the, near the bottom, bottom third. And then the two updated within, with the, with the policy question around the neighborhood parks. So that decision doesn't, again, change the, the result for neighbor, for the residential. It doesn't really move, move you in position with these other communities. But you can see the range is, here is anywhere from close to 4,000 to over 16,000.
Do you have any idea what Hillsborough charges?
Um, I think.
They have their own parks district, don't they?
District.
No, it's just city.
No, Hillsborough's with the city, yeah.
City, okay, city parks.
We can look that up though.
Yeah.
Just curious.
This is the office comparison, so the 30,000 square feet for office. And this shows, again, the green is the current. The updated, still keeping residential, paying for the neighborhood parks would move you slightly higher in position, more towards center. And then the, using, allocating a portion of neighborhood parks would definitely raise you relative to some of the others. And again, there's, there's a lot of, you know, baked into these results. Part of it is that some of the other communities don't charge parks SDCs to non-residential development at all. Some include neighborhood parks, some do not. So, and then there's differences in the assumed employees per thousand square feet as well. So lots of differences there. Gladstone, you know, has the most aggregated groupings of non-residential. I think there's like four groupings, there are four categories. So they're very broad. That's, so that's, you're just seeing all of that here in these results.
Can you go back to residential?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Is the fact that Milwaukee's is so low is because they're in the park district?
I'm not familiar with theirs.
Yeah.
I'm not sure for the rationale on that.
I was just looking at how low Gladstone is.
It's there, yeah.
And how high they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Get those car dealerships.
It's the car, yeah, car dealerships.
If they ever had a sales tax.
Yeah, and that, that's, you know, getting down into the nitty gritty of the methodology and how they determine that split between residential and non-residential. And my guess is they include neighborhood parks as well, non-residential. So it just, and then adding on the groupings being very different than the others.
They have a lot of residentially developable land, you know, in, in Gladstone. And I know that they just, in the last two years, they built a new commercial structure on Arlington, right just past Armstrong. It's a very small little building, very nondescript, but it's, it's brand new. And there's a middle housing going in on Arlington, that's to the, the old, the, it used to be a Minute Mark, but now it's an Indian restaurant. It's a tri, triplex going and moving, going in there.
So just, I guess, next steps, if this, when you're ready to move forward. The statute requires that you take formal, formal action to adopt the methodology. Before you do that, you have to issue a 90-day notice of the date for the first public hearing. And then we have to have a methodology documentation available for public review 60 days prior to that adoption, first meeting to consider the methodology. I think that's it.
So that concludes the presentation. We'll open it up for questions.
Questions? This has been obviously a very long time in coming. Our SDCs for parks have always lagged behind others that we have. And I'm hoping that we can see our way through to adopting this at a, at a future meeting so that we can move this forward. It's not going to make up for all the time that we've not done this, but it will help.
Can you put the non-residential chart back up for a minute?
So on that one, I think it's going to be, do we include neighborhood parks or not in the non-residential calculation?
That's what I'm just going to speak to. Keeping in mind a couple of things. One is that if these things don't get built, the SDCs are zero. And we just spent an hour and a half talking about why commercial development isn't happening in Oregon City. And I would hate to see us jump from, if we move from the green to the first orange at 57, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. I would hate to see us jump up to the third most expensive because that just becomes one more reason not to develop commercial.
The third yellow one?
Yeah, the, so, so I guess what I, I would advocate for not including neighborhood parks in the non-residential calculation, so that we stay at that 57,000 mark instead of jumping it up 30,000 higher and being up near the top. Because that's just another obstacle to commercial development. And it really doesn't impact the residential, but, you know, $300. And $300 on $50,000 in total SDCs is, you know, is not, is not a big deal. And I'd also just say one more thing, that I'm, I'm glad to see the tiering on the residential side. That's something that I brought up at our Gold Retreat a couple of days ago to try to find a way to tip that a little bit. So I'm glad to see that.
I see your mic's on.
Yeah, I don't know if I have much to say on it. I mean, I agree with your point to some degree, but it could go up a little bit more. Because I'm not sure, if we take that green one out, I don't think that puts us in the middle.
Well, he's talking about the yellow one.
No, I know.
Yeah, the NPRES, and then we've got NP all.
But I don't think that would be, that wouldn't be quite the middle either. Yeah, still be in the low half.
Scott, oh, two now.
No problem. I agree with Commissioner Mitchell, and I also want to add though that, and I'm not saying that this is what you were implying, but this also means that we have a lot more that we can be doing to incentivize that commercial development. And, I mean, the first thing that I noticed is that, second to the exorbitant amount that Gladstone is, is Lake Oswego. And they seem to be doing just fine with commercial development. I mean, what, did they, isn't it Hoffman Construction that's moving over there right now? So I agree with you 100%, but I also think that this is a case study that there's additional things that we can be doing as well for commercial development. And I hope that we would be willing to look at that.
Could you give one example? I think I know where you're going with that, but I don't want to speak out of turn. An example of what more we could be doing?
Well, I mean, that's not what the discussion is tonight, but it's just something that I wanted to point out.
Scott, anything?
I, I was actually having the same thoughts as Commissioner Mitchell. Is, you know, when the cost on the residential is negligible, but it's substantial for non-residential. I feel like it makes sense to, to have the lower, like, option not including the, the non-residential.
Do we have the option of coming back at another time? Not, not recent, soon, but there's always an option to go back and revisit it, I presume, at some, in the future.
Yeah, so I mean, the last time we updated this was in 2000. That's not standard, so.
No, no, that's not.
We can definitely put this on a more regular schedule for updating.
And I, and I still don't understand why it just, anyway, I don't want to go backwards. But I, I think that you were thinking exactly what I was thinking based on our previous conversation. If we have any hope at all of moving the needle to get, I mean, on commercial and industrial development, I mean, I think we were extremely fortunate that AdVantis came. I mean, they could have gone probably anywhere, but maybe there were also some of those incentives. So I, I would agree with you in the fact that I think we should stay around the 57,000. Just, you know, maybe that's why there's not a lot of commercial development in Gladstone. I don't know. Well, there's not also, there's a lot of stuff that could be redeveloped still. Let's just look at it that way. So I was just wandering over there today.
Okay, and so the commission did not have a problem with consolidating the uses?
No.
As proposed?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Everyone's okay with that, so it's going to remove some of that granularity, you know, so. Right, I mean, but it will help with is some of the change in use things that you've heard of in the past, right? Because a lot of these categories are going to probably be pretty similar when you change from these similar, like, you know, food store, restaurant appliance. You know, all of a sudden, if that's in one category, you're, you're not going to get what we're getting now where we come back and say, oh, you went from, you know, an office to a retail, therefore you owe the difference in the SDC or the look back. I think it'll help with some of that that we've been having in the past. You know, someone who's a low use is, you know, going to have to pay a little bit more, but it, it does equal out over the, you know, 80-year lifetime of a building, right? As we look at the change in uses that happen over time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little bit apprehensive about what happens when we have particular uses that are downtown that were one thing. And, you know, we only are, and again, I argued about this when we were doing the look back on some of those properties where we've got occupants that can document from, you know, 100 years ago, this is what it was and here's, because that happens, it's not happening as much. But, you know, we had a building that was a church, then was a department store, then was a restaurant, and then wasn't, and then was, and it went, you know, over that time period. So it gets, it gets a little dicey. I think too, I'm hoping this will not be a disincentive to do, you know, upper story redevelopment at some point in time. There's almost all of those buildings that have second stories, probably had more stories before fires, but they were occupied residentially, they've been converted into offices. And then how do we, you know, help incentivize going back to residential if that's what's needed?
All right, any other?
Well, I'll just, I, I think that look back provision and highest use or most recent use, I think that's something that we need to look at again personally, but not, not tonight, not part of this discussion.
So do we have enough direction?
I think so.
Sounds good. So we'll proceed with, the one thing I did want to know is, do you want to take this to PrAC before we start scheduling public hearings? So we do have a PrAC meeting coming up. We can have them just do a quick review and then start the process of public hearing.
Gentlemen?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay, we'll schedule that for our February meeting and then begin.
Hopefully they won't slow up the process. I think we need to get moving on that 90-day notice because we're, you know, we're, even if we, you get this before PrAC in March, that's still what, April, May, June? Do we have any hope of adopting it by July?
So we've already put a placeholder on the February meeting for this. Hope, so if you're okay with that, we'll do it in a week. And then we'll schedule the 90-day hearing after that meeting.
Okay.
I think one thing you're going to hear when we do the hearings, you know, fortunately, the, the increase isn't as big as some I've seen. The one I recall was transportation SDCs back in two, early 2000s. We think it was from like 2,800 to about 7,200. And so what you're going to probably hear is, you know, I've, I've already platted, I've already done my lots, I've already got my subdivision approval, but I haven't pulled my building permits. I assume the parks SDC at your old rate, now you're going to make me pay this new rate. I didn't put it into my pro forma. The one thing I would ask is, let's keep it simple. That transportation SDC got broken up into, I think, four different tiers based on when you were platted, if you had a, you know, if you had a land use approval, if you, it was a mess that went on for years.
Yes, yep.
So I would much rather just think about, maybe we do, you know, if it's our current rate, we go up 50% the first year, the next 50% the second, or something like that. But please don't create some matrix, we'd love to avoid that. This is, dealing with SDCs is enough, but, you know, tying it to a plat date or a subdivision approval date, it's just, it's a, it's a permitting nightmare on the backend. But I guarantee you, you will hear that, so just think about, how do you want to, you know, implement these steps? You know, our SDCs, all our SDCs are tied to CPI. So every January 1st, they go up by Northwest CPI, construct, whatever we use. We, we reference a CPI tool that we use at Northwest. You know, maybe it's tied to, you know, the January 1 update. I mean, we can do this multiple ways. I just ask that we don't break it up into four different things based on when something was submitted. And we don't have to decide that tonight.
Yeah, I, I don't believe this has gone to the Development Review Group, but I believe they were told at our last, because there's, they're only meeting every other month now. I think they were informed that this was coming, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Kind of about time, isn't it? Okay, we have the usual list of suspects and the list of future work session items.
Correct, sorry, I was just going to check one thing, like. What am I looking for here? Hold on, sorry. Yep, so for March, obviously you can see legislative update from Representative Hartman, McLaughlin Promenade Encroachment Discussion, and Climate Friendly Equitable Community Update. And then what we did have is we're, we'll probably try and fit, probably a discussion about the goals, the goals update. So just try and figure out when we can get that cleaned up and then in front of the commission, whether it's there or we might just bring it to a, a regular meeting. But it won't be, obviously it won't be on the 19th, so we have the first meeting in March, March 5th. Then we have the work session on the 11th. So we'll try and get those in there so you can review kind of the draft that we're putting together based on the goal setting retreat this weekend. Any other questions?
Seems not to be.
Okay. Next is just update on some of the city projects that we're working on, the Quiet Zone. The Geotech work has been completed. The consultant team is working on 30% design concepts, which will also drive a revised cost estimate. which will also drive a revised cost estimate that we'll be bringing back for the commission, so that they're aware of any cost estimates or overruns that may occur as we get more detailed plans. The Charter Park discussion, we're bringing back for a work session on March 11th. We just talked about that. The Cayuse 5 Memorial, we continue to work with the Confederate Tribes of Yemantil Indian Reservation. They're currently consulting with the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronde, and so we're waiting for their input. We do have some just preliminary estimates that we've been working on while we're waiting for confirmation from CTUR on moving forward. And we meet with them monthly on those updates on that project. So the courthouse, we did have a meeting on this, I think, at our last meeting, and then we're going to work with county staff on a joint county, Board of County Commissioners, City Commission meeting to discuss the process, as well as securing the courthouse once it's vacated.
Did they make, did they, has any movement happened?
Not yet, no. For Tomwata Village, the Planning Commission approved the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronde's land use application, so we're still within the appeal period, but to date, I'm not aware of any appeal being submitted. And then nothing new on the Kenema rights of what issue.
So I still think it would be worthwhile to have a very brief update on where the plan sits now. It would help, I think, all of us in communicating that to the public, those who are not involved in the land use meeting. I watched some of it, but didn't get through all of it. And they said they wanted to have a meeting with us as well, and just trying to get, well, the one, my priority is to get the meeting with the county commission. They are having a goal-setting session, I believe, this next week. And strangely enough, they've never really done that in, like, eight years. I think the last time they did it was, it was before Jerry was the county administrator. They didn't do it during Ludlow's admin or Commissioner Smith. So it will be very interesting to see what comes out of that.
Always use first names, please.
What?
Always use first names, please. I do not like being confused with another Commissioner Smith.
I agree, that's why I said "to." It's funny that her name came up on my phone this morning, and I was like, it was like a momentary, like, my heart skipped a beat, and then I thought, no, that's got to be Emily, if it was Emily instead. I had her assistant under her name, and it came up, and I went, why is she calling me? Anyway, okay.
Question.
Yes, go right ahead.
And I believe I brought this up before, and I know that we recently had an update on this, but I thought that Center Street was also supposed to be one of the ones that we were regularly getting updates on, included on the list.
It should be on the work session list, is what you're-
You want it added to this as a project?
Well, I just, I thought that when we first decided that it was going to be on the list of continual updates.
Okay.
So, and I recognize that we did have a recent update in a different format.
Right.
But I don't know if I'm misremembering that, but-
The decanting facility. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is, we already did the update on city projects. We have item five, which is commission reports. And we, this may be quick, we may not have very many tonight. You're at the top of the pops.
Well, as far as reports I have, I was formally voted in to the Homeless Coalition Committee just this last week, so I'll be giving you updates as those meetings continue.
Sunday, I spent the day at the End of the Oregon Trail for their goals retreat. It was a very busy weekend.
Yes.
I won't go into all of that, but what was a, kind of a continuation of our city's goals retreat, when we were talking about Goal One, apparently not to be numbered in the future, which was, the End of the Oregon Trail has been, board has been very interested and focused lately on working towards telling a variety of stories, or all the stories, at some point at the End of the Oregon Trail, as it connects to Oregon City's history. So our DEI discussion at the city goals retreat kind of was a topic at End of the Oregon Trail. We spent a lot of the day focusing on that. Not that we were questioning going forward with it, or the End of the Oregon Trail is very much invested in diversity and inclusion and trying to... So we're going through some trainings as a board, and kind of that will help kind of refocus our mission at the End of the Oregon Trail. There's going to be, so that was actually a two-day retreat, Saturday and Sunday. I was there on Sunday because of the city goals session. We spent a good hour trying to figure out when we were going to meet the next time for a full day. So I think there's multiple, at least two more full-day sessions that the board's going to work on their goals and mission. So that will come back more detailed to this commission at some point, too, and will hopefully shed some light on the future of what that organization's doing and how that fits with our building at the End of the Oregon Trail. So more to come on that.
I wanted to ask if you would convey this, and I don't know if we need to go staff to staff, or you can, I would like to see a little bit more partnership with the board and us so that we have a better idea of kind of what direction they're going in. And I think I mentioned previously that, you know, we are partners in the sense that we have the underlying, you know, land, they are using the facility, but we need to be at least better, and maybe it's, you're doing a good job of communicating what's going on, but I think having some time to just talk with them, kind of like we do with some of the committees that we have, like with PrAC, and we're going to hopefully have a future meeting with the school board. We've had one already, but not, you know, we just got the tip of the iceberg. So I would like to see, I know, I don't want us to have to schedule more meetings, but I think it's important for us as property owners in that area to really get a better understanding of what they see. And, you know, it's kind of like the funnel, it's kind of like they have their goals, we have the city goals, and they all kind of fit in the one sort of pot. And it's not that we have to be doing the same thing, but we, it should be, at least we should have some better understanding of kind of what's going on. So I would appreciate if we could facilitate even, you know, an hour discussion would be really helpful.
I don't disagree. I think we need, I think they need to understand where they're going.
I agree.
No, first, and I think that's what they're working on. I think there definitely has been a change in the amount of investment on the board in terms of time and energy. So I have no doubt that they also would want to have a closer relationship, because they definitely want to, you know, have a support from the city in going forward on grants and various other things. And so it would definitely be helpful to have a closer partnership, and they want that, too, I'm pretty sure. They're just still working through kind of what their mission and goals are, so they're on, and they're doing an amazing job. I actually thanked the board when I went back there, because the conversation that we had at our goals retreat, where our city manager kind of talked about, you know, what the thoughts were about that building even just a few months ago in terms of staffing here, and in terms of even our own mind not knowing what the future of that building would be, and conveyed my thankfulness of the board to really step up, and our new executive director to really step up to kind of change that dialogue and to put, to make it visible the support that they really have in moving forward and investing more time and effort and money into that building. So I think we're in a better place than we have been in a while there, so I'm sure that will continue.
I agree. I think, I think this is a facility that I think more than many others that COVID really hit it hard, and it's taken a considerable amount of time to come back from that.
Oh, for sure.
And so that's something I totally recognize. Adam.
You skipped me? She's- You skipped me?
The order.
I'm just going up in the order on this.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at this list, so we haven't had anything-
I'm not looking at the list, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm looking at the list, so it says DMO, and obviously you can report on South Fork if you like.
You can report on South Fork if you like.
Well, he's after, he's after-
Adam's next.
Yes, Adam's next.
I don't want to avoid the list.
Sorry, I'm just going by the agenda.
So first, at CIC, we had a presentation about CFAC, the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Program, which I'm assuming we will be hearing a very similar presentation at our next work session, where it's scheduled to be on the agenda. C4, big news, ever since I've started, and like I said at the retreat, it's, I'm reaching my four-year mark, this will be my first in-person C4 meeting in March. So I'm really, I'm really looking forward to that.
Has it always been on Zoom?
It's always been on Zoom, apart from when we started doing the retreat again for C4, which has been in person, but our regular meetings have never been in person since I've been on, and so that will be nice, and I was telling them they need to start doing it before all the other representatives from other cities have to start paying tolls to get to Oregon City. So the next, so yeah, that's C4, and in addition to that, we also talked about something that I'm pretty excited about, which is that the Board of County Commissioners is creating a Library District Task Force to go over some of the underlying issues. It's been a while since the district has been looked at from a more of a critical perspective. How do we fix some of the things that they weren't necessarily maybe thinking about back when it was originally created? And I do believe that the city manager has nominated Mr. Williams to be on that task force, which I was very glad to hear, because I know in my conversations with him, he has a lot of thoughts about the way that our district is comprised and ways that it could be improved. So I'm looking forward to hearing about that, and then-
Could I just add one quick thing under that?
Yes.
So as part of this, so this has been going on since pre-COVID.
Oh, God.
COVID area, trying to get this task force to kind of start, it stops. But, you know, I think part of this is a discussion about the amount of the district, right? I mean, the pie is only so big, right? And so, you know, part of this is to begin a conversation if that 39 cents per thousand, I think off the top of my head, I think it's 39 cents per thousand for the district, should be more. Included in this, there are some folks who believe, for example, in Oregon City, we have, I think, 55% of the population we serve is city residents, 45% is county residents. It's a very big district. Obviously, we made improvements to the Carnegie Library in order to accommodate, you know, the population that we serve. As part of that, we use part of the library district funds that we receive to help pay off the debt for that building. It did not seem fair that the city of Oregon City residents should shoulder the entire burden of paying off debt when 45% of the users would not pay into providing that. There are some who do not believe the city should be able to do that. So that is part of the discussion. I've told Greg, we're not interested in that discussion. If they really want to, we'll say the city owns it, and they can, we'll charge them rent. Then it's an operational cost and not paying debt. They should focus on the pie and what that pie should be. The other thing that they want to discuss is the allocated costs that cities charge for our services. So for example, you know, we break down IT costs by computer programs, software, and employees, right? Or HR, right? So the city provides HR services for the entire city, of which we collect on a per-person basis to pay for that service. So there are some who want to tell cities what their allocated costs should be. The library district has no business being in how cities run their governments. That's up to the Budget Committee and the city commissions and the city councils to decide how they do that. So, you know, you may hear some things that come out of this. I think Greg has an understanding of where I come from. I think we are more than fair in how we, how we work with our library, how we're respectful to those funds, and how we try to maximize the hours that our program and that facility's open. It's the third-most hours in the library district. You know, so, you know, just know that this task force has been a long time coming with a couple, handful of people who, you know, really don't like some of the things or want to have more control over how those district funds are spent. And, you know, like I said, my direction to Greg is, you know, focus on library services, not how cities run their cities. Not going to have a library district telling us how we're going to spend our money.
Yeah, and I think, just going back to our last budget cycle, it was abundantly clear to us with the public comments, with the presentations that were given to us by staff, just the inequities that have persisted in what I think we could all agree is a little bit antiquated by now. And so hopefully, this will not be a harmful exercise, but hopefully it'll be something that's actually helpful for our library district. So looking forward to hearing about that. Last thing for C4 is, we discussed the Strategic Investment Fund, which is the pot of money that the vehicle registration fees go into. I had a good conversation with our Public Works Director, and she had asked that I point out that the remaining funds in that pot be maybe directed to one of our projects, specifically the Beaver Creek Road, Highway 213 project, which we've been trying to get funded for a while now. And so it couldn't have happened better, because the person who was representing the Beaver Creek hamlet was just before me in the queue, and he brought up, we need to get Beaver Creek and 213 fixed, because we've got, he put it the opposite of what I, of how I would have put it. I, the way I put it is that we have unincorporated residents who are coming through Oregon City and using our facilities, and he saw it as the opposite of our people going through their facilities and unincorporated, and both are true. But I think that it timed out very nicely, and I was informed by Ms. Webb at our goal-setting retreat that she was contacted by the Deputy Director for their Department of Transportation and Development at the county to discuss what those additional funds might be used for and if they could potentially be used for that project. It's not the whole, you know, budget that we need, but it is something. And so that's an exciting development there. Lastly, on the topic of transportation, this isn't a committee report, but I figured that I would enlighten my colleagues on an issue that is, that is very important to me and very important to all of us. So over the weekend, three articles came out from the Statesman Journal, and they were going into the activities and operations of the Oregon Department of Transportation. Many of us have been calling for an audit. This reporting is based off of an internal audit, so it's their own people, keep in mind. And even when it's their own people, there was some interesting stuff that, oh, excuse me, some interesting stuff that came to light. So I just want to read some of this, if you'll, if that's all right. So this headline right here is, "5.3 Billion Dollar Oregon Transportation Bill Touted Accountability Measures, But Failed to Deliver." So I have highlighted, it says, "The Oregon Transportation Commission in January reviewed and approved a budget audit that found ODOT had overestimated revenue in the 23-25 budget by $1.1 billion and did not properly record how millions of dollars in House Bill 2017 funds were allocated." And later it says, "Auditors could only match about 85% of House Bill 2017 funding with spending plans." So there's that first, and then this next one. "The October 2023 Non-Audit Review Found ODOT's Public Transportation Division Failed to Ensure Fund Recipients Submitted the Required Annual Agreed Upon Procedures and Budget Reports." And this is a quote, "Not one qualified entity," and qualified entities are the- entity," and qualified entities are the organizations across the state that receive STIF funding, which is the statewide transportation improvement fund. That's collected by the statewide transit tax, and that goes to paying for transit services across the state. And the qualified entity, or QE, for the metro area is TRIMET. And so it says, "Not one qualified entity submitted both items for all four years reviewed according to the review. The highest recorded compliance rate was when 50% of 40 recipients submitted a budget in 2021." And then just one more quote that I wanted to talk about. ODOT staff, ODOT staff also told auditors that money in the statewide transportation improvement program, that's the STIP, and basically, for those who don't know, it's the statewide equivalent of our transportation system plan, basically guiding investments in statewide transportation infrastructure. The STIP was not compared with what was available. End quote, "The stance has been that there is always state revenue available to deliver on what is programmed in the STIP. Checking that the budget and STIP align was not seen as necessary." So again, this is, these are their own people that are making these comments. So I wonder how bad it would be if there was actually an independent audit of what's going on there. And so this has been a big topic of conversation in Salem, just for this first half of the week. And the transportation package that we've all been hearing about, the initial framework, was supposed to be released by the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Transportation this Friday. That has been delayed, given this new information. And hopefully, this will be a, a good way to help incentivize those of us at the city and county level who have been asking for more transparency at ODOT and that if they want to ask us for a 30 or 50 cent gas tax increase and double our registration fees and all of that and DMV fees, that first they have to prove that their organization can function in the first place. So I just wanted to update you all on that.
Well, I will have to say for our benefit that I highly doubt that Oregon City residents are clogging up the roadways in the hamlet of Beaver Creek.
A question before my report. So is part of what that Library Task Force, are they going to look at service areas? And why does our service area go to, at the edge of the city limits of Canby, for instance?
Yeah, I think it's something that's potentially, you know, there, you know, but it's like, how do we look at it as a whole?
Right.
Right? Because I mean, you can probably look at all those boundaries a little bit and say, why is, you know, this one going here and that one going there? So I mean, that, if it is, it's going to be part of a larger discussion.
Okay. Thank you. South Fork Water Board, our last meeting, we, the board approved an increase in SDCs for raw water of, I think it was about $1,200, 12, round figures, $1,200. We'll be looking at rates next. C4 Metro, and this is the regional, reasonable, regional flexible funds allocation for 2028, 2030. And we had two projects on there, on the wish list, both related to 99E, 99E streetscape improvements, and then the walkway from, what, 10th to Tamwata Village. Dana Webb has been informed that the streetscape improvement is no longer under consideration for that funding. So if we're going to go forward with that, we're going to have to look elsewhere for funding. No word on the walk, the actual walkway. That's, they, they break the RFFA fund distribution into, into different phases, and that walkway is in a different phase. It hasn't been worked on yet, but we won't be getting, going forward funding for the streetscape improvement. That's it.
Okay. So the, I attended the last Arts Commission meeting, and they, we have several new members. I will say that the majority of the people who are serving on that group are residents of Oregon City. And then we have some artist folks, and we have two people who live in the unincorporated area just right beside the city, but not in Beaver Creek. So they're not using that roadway. As you know, they had a very successful opening in December of the art piece on the corner of 7th and Center. They are working on the vendor list for the restoration project. They're looking to hire someone to do the restoration on some of the art objects in the community. So if you haven't seen the bench there next to Mike's drive-in, there's some tile stuff is chipped off of it and that sort of thing. There's other pieces that were evaluated up and down, excuse me, not on Mallal Avenue, but on 7th Street, and then touch up of some of the murals. We're still trying to work with the Elks Club to do a restoration of the mural of Sheriff Joe Meek on the side. It's kind of in not good shape. I think the one that, where's the one that's got Dr. Barclay on it? Because that one's not looking real great either.
That would be on 6th.
Is it on 6th? Anyway, yeah, that one's looking a little sad as well. So they're working on that for, for a vendor. The new chair is, I'm trying to think of what Josh's last name is. Can't think of it, but anyway. So he's the new chair. That's good. And then they did a little bit of celebration for some outgoing members, which is good. As you know, the Courthouse Committee, we're still trying to, you know, get back on that, to get them to agree to a meeting. And I'm sure that something will come out of this work session that they're going to have for the goal-setting session. Clackamas West is, apparently the boring machine is, has broken through on the other side. So we were supposed to be invited to go down there and look at it, but I didn't, I don't know when that was. So I don't know, I think it's already broken through, which is good. So it's making good progress. And they haven't found any other objects or anything like that, which I'm really grateful for. We are looking at the Capital Projects Plan, which is moving forward. And of course, you know, with that 5% fee increase every year, I'm just, I just, I'm looking at that and I'm like, wow. Still trying to get on the agenda about the differentiation between what cities pay and what the outline folks pay. So, and I was re-elected vice chair, so I'm, I'm still keeping it, trying to keep that up there. Downtown Oregon City Association, we had a board meeting late January, and I believe they have an event coming up the end of this month. It's called Last Thursday. And I'm not exactly sure what that's all about, but it's a Last Thursday event. They were very interested in making sure that they get, we get our support on getting the Liberty Plaza and the other improvements. The Downtown Association, did I report on the joint session we had at City Hall? Did I report on that already? I can't remember if I did or not. Anyway, well, there was a joint business social between DOKA Chamber and OCBA at City Hall. And we had a lot of discussions about, well, why don't we use parking kitty? How come we don't get rid of parking? What are we going to do about parking when the courthouse leaves? And we do have, you know, our parking study that we did, we are no longer engaged with the consultant, but it seems to me that that would be a project that needs to come back to assess kind of where we are with that. I did mention to them that I'd had several kind of sort of brainstorm conversations with our parking management staff about looking at the lot at 13th and Main to maybe provide some parking for employees, because that's a big problem, particularly the ones that work, you know, a few hours here and a few hours there. They tend to park on the street. So that's something that's going to move forward. I think the next, let's see, where are we? In March? So the First City Festival is still scheduled for the last weekend in July, so mark your calendars on for that. Metro Policy Advisory Committee, so we did have a meeting at the end of the month. And Brett Sherman was elected chair, replacing Pam Trees, who is from Washington County. So the chairmanship rotates among the counties. And you kind of get to be second vice president, first vice president, and then you move into the chair slot. And I thank Brett Sherman for bailing me out because I was the first vice president, and I did not want to chair that group. So he has graciously stepped forward, so he's now going to be the chair. And we're looking at the issues that are the fallout from the Sherwood urban growth boundary expansion. That's, I'm sure, going to court. And then there's the one over in Washington County that I'm sure has already gone to court. But we're also talking about the housing issue, and I have some very strong feelings about that. You already heard about South Fork, Willamette Falls and Landings, hoping to get, hoping they got occupancy last week of the building there at the other side of the bridge. And they might be having some hard-hat event, and I'll make sure that you're all invited to that. So we can all go in and kind of see what the space looks before it starts getting filled up with stuff. Obviously, we haven't had any movement with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. Has Kate Brown contacted you at all since the last time we met? So the bad, the sort of the bad news is, is that the Heritage Area Coalition had presented her with the proposed legislation that's, we'd like to move forward to Congress. And they've been briefing Representative Bynum. We've got support from all the state representatives, including Cliff Benz and our two senators, to move that forward. And now apparently they, the trust has found something wrong with it. And when she had, when we had met, she had told us that she was going to support moving it forward. So I don't know what's going on with that yet. Locks Authority, we have a meeting at the end of the month. Our executive director is at a special districts hearing, not hearing, but a meeting. We are moving the legislation forward. I believe the ask is, we have 7 million, so the total ask is going to be 11 million to complete the older repairs. There are repairs underway right now going on at the locks with some funding from the Corps, but then there's the rest of the work that needs to be done. Plus, we're looking at how to organize the operational side, because the locks, as authority is going to have to hire someone to operate the locks, because we're not doing it. And I don't know yet, the governor's very slow on the appointments with the term ending of Tudie Smith. She was representing not necessarily the county per se, but the county in general. And they, and that position is still vacant. We have a number of vacancies, which is not good. I do want to report on the Youth Advisory Commission. So after our meeting last night, I went to their meeting, and they were very pleased the fact that we had moved the resolution forward. My next step is to see if I can get on the city, excuse me, the County Commission agenda. But there's also a bill, I understand, that's in play right now, that might ban flavored tobacco statewide. But I still think it's worth going to the County Commissioners and asking us, asking them to proceed with banning it, at least countywide, at this point in time. And they are interested in talking with Representative Hartman, so they're going to invite her to a future meeting. The other thing that I can report on is that, in addition to Adam's excellent tour, which they were all talking about, they were, we had a collaboration between Adam and myself in producing some T-shirts for them to wear to Salem. And I was told that they were very noticeable, and several representatives and senators came up to them and said, oh, you know, and they wanted to engage them. And then they had a session of just the Youth Advisory Commissions with some of the electives. And apparently, our group was the only group in that meeting that asked any questions. So Hannah was very proud of them for stepping up and engaging and asking some really salient questions. One of their projects is, they would like to come and ask us if we would support having six, well, I said, pick an age. So I'll just use 16, 16-year-olds and older voting in school board elections. And apparently, they've done some research. So apparently, Alameda County in California does that. And also, the city of Berkeley also allows for that. But they just now got into, the first time they were able to do it was in the 2024 election last year. So that is something that they're, they're wanting to move forward. I don't know when they're going to come and ask us, but I'll just give, giving you a heads up now about that. So they've got a number of initiatives, but the other thing that people were impressed with was all of our members from our Youth Advisory Commission went to Salem. So, and unfortunately, half of them were out with whatever that is that's going around. So I'm glad they did not show up because don't want to go there with that. So that is my report. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that apparently, without my knowing it, Mayor Beatty from Milwaukee nominated myself and Michael Milch to be a city's representative on this Library Task Force. I don't know what's going to happen with that at this point in time. The other committee that I'm on reluctantly is the Regional Solid Waste Committee. And I will say that they are meeting in person, but I have a meeting an hour before that, and I am not driving to Metro on any afternoon at 3 o'clock to go. So I'm, I'm the only one, besides one other person, in Troutdale that we're, we're the Zoom people. I just, I'm just not going to do that. I can't. So I am, don't have anything really new to report to you about that. They're still having the same discussion they had when I was on the previous committee about moving the commercial tonnage and commercial activity out of our, out of our transfer station. And again, I'm very concerned about, while I think that's a really great idea, I'm concerned about the, would we, you know, how much revenue would we be losing for our enhancement committee? We still have the residential, and so maybe it's a wash, but I'm just keeping my eye on that. So, anyway, anything else? Are, are we ready to adjourn? Nothing new on the, I saw a lot of the posts on the fire at the mill. So that's been really good. The Clackamas Fire District people have been posting to, giving us information, posting so that we can dispense with some of the questions that are coming up. I did attend the impromptu session last Friday where it was about an hour. And I don't know if there were other electives. I couldn't see that who was attending. They were having some technical difficulty, you were there? They were having technical difficulty, so you couldn't see anybody. But the biggest concern was from several residents or a particular resident along the bluff and what was going on with the smoke. And then, of course, the questions have been from people is, you know, why don't you put the fire out? Well, we all know that the reason they're not putting the fire out is because we don't want any buildings collapsing on people. So I thought that was really good for them to, to keep putting this press stuff out, because that's going to hopefully dispel a lot of problems. And other than that, I was at Candy Lane this afternoon, and it was a lot of fun. There's, it's a great group of kids out there. It's a bilingual school, so I got introduced in Spanish. I understood about half of what they said, but that's okay. So we are adjourned. Yes, sir.